Coffee from Mr. Rothenberg's office, but I have never seen anything after that as of today, and I was out of the office for part of the day.
I was informed by Chris Huggs of your firm that that had been distributed to the city. I believe he said on Tuesday. So then they received it Thursday afternoon?
That's what it says here. I'm reading, Tuesday, May 21st. You sent it to us, we looked at it, we did a red line on it, and we forwarded it on Thursday. Um, this deal is to share it. Get it off.
Okay, and that's where I said I was out of the office all afternoon, and I didn't get back until like before.
It was sent to the firm on Friday, and Chris Huggs returned it to me, redlined on Monday. And I made comments to it, sent it back till Monday evening or Tuesday morning. And in my conversation with him this morning, he said that there was really nothing for him to consider, that it would be a traditional I would have to consider by the council. And that he had already forwarded that to, I believe, to share it. So, he did not tell me what they'd forwarded, if he's had my copy on Tuesday.
I'll address the matter in a manner, in a manner, when I have an opportunity with Mr. Mullen.
It, well, it appears that I'm not able to proceed at this time. I had, I had a lease agreement, as commented by Mr. Huggs and as by myself, most of which we were, I were incognito with, with two exceptions. One would be the recommendation of the law firm to not allow protection of the frequencies that we would need on the tower, and which I would say in the last meeting that we're going to allow that, and like to be able to see the Internet America Union, because I do believe that protection of frequencies is in there for that particular company. So, I think without those two things in hand, there's really not any way for anyone to make any decision.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you first email me the text money to present this?
Yes, ma'am.
If I remember correctly, it had an amount of fourteen thousand dollars, and it was only, it was only requested one tower by the Cabinet of Children.
That's correct.
The second proposal comes in, the money goes down, but you want two towers. And now, it's three towers, and you put all that amount.
No, ma'am. First of all, the fourteen thousand dollars was a representation of if I were to do this job for you. In other words, if you called me and said, "We would like to have this network built," how much would it cost? It would be around fourteen thousand dollars. It was a representation of value of what I was providing to the city, not a cost to the city. That's what that particular thing was. The agreement that I had asked for was one of the more towers, and I'm really only concerned about, the original one was the one in Sacred Park, which was not even utilized for the city's water services. The second tower that I was interested in was the new street tower, that I believe is also not being used by any other entity of this kind other than to deliver the water services. So I was not interested in the north tower, although I'd love to have it. I would be, I was not interested in the south tower, although I'd like that. My two primary concerns were the ones that are not being utilized by other carriers.
Which would be the one that happened?
That's, that's correct. I'll take care of it. So you see just on the table. I need to say that, because usually I get told that, but I don't see how you can go forward on a decision without, without the rest of the facts.
So was it, what, what can we do to, versus the contract, and you just want to de-sit towers? Or can we do zip link?
May I start off?
Start him off.
Counselor?
I'll join you at the podium.
Here, here's the concern I have. I did enter into a brief talk with the Councilman of Norah last time, and his comment was that I assume that if you think this needs to be competitive, they'll tell me, and if it needs to be changed, it will tell me. I apologize that we haven't gotten back to the motion, maybe faster than we wanted since last council meeting. But here's the problem we've got. The motion to table needs to be the order of business on this subject tonight. But we've been in the power lease business now, Internet America. In the meanwhile, we had requests for Ziplink, and courage during last summer. And Ziplink approached us and told us three different times, and in each case, it was the frequency competition issue that Ziplink went away on, and then responded to us. We've got Internet America out there, we've got Ziplink out there, and we've got this gentleman here tonight. I'm very uncomfortable, although this is not a matter of law, and I'm very uncomfortable with three providers, and not having a full control of the issues, and not putting this up competitively. The other issue that I have on his is the duration of the contract, automatically being renewed for a substantial period of time with the technology that comes with it in payment in lieu of good American dollars. The third issue that I have is just one of fairness and competition. I know that the other people are out there, if we're going to do a procurement on the towers, I think we need to separate it and make it easy. If we want service for the city facilities, that ought to be a market requirement. If we want to lease the towers, or put the towers up for lease for anybody that wants to lease the towers. But let's do it in a fashion that's organized and manageable, so we can compare dollars and cents like you all want to do, whether it's another item. I can't recommend it tonight, and you know, Chris was right there, but one of the problems I have is your duration and your automatic renewal.
Right.
Thirty years. Okay.
Which, which we addressed in the comments.
I understand, but the point is, if we're going to let you have a thirty-year lease, or consider a thirty-year lease, Ziplink was looking for something similar in one way, just because of the radio frequency thing. I'd like to see everybody on the same page, on the same competitive deal as a matter of policy. We're leasing here, so statute doesn't require us to be competitive. As a council policy issue that I'm suggesting that you adopt, you don't have to. You couldn't pick anybody in this room tonight and say, "I'll lease the tower to you." But I think it's appropriate to table, because it's been none of the discussions you've done, but when you commented last time.
And I, I just want to draw one analogy, if I may. As I understand this frequency thing, and I'm not an Internet guy, but-
I'm not either.
Or, or, or an RFDI, or, or any of that. And, and as I said, with full disclosure, at the last council meeting, Mr. Mullen is a friend of mine, he is a client of mine, and I am a client of his. And when this issue comes to a vote, I will certainly recuse myself from any vote due to that. But, so then I think we get a better grasp of this frequency range. It would be very much in the manner of owning multiple strip malls, each tower being a strip mall, and leasing out the, the spaces within that strip mall of each of these towers. Well, if I could have leased to Mr. Mullen, and he's going to sell ice cream in this particular strip mall, I would probably want to give him the guarantee that there's not going to be anybody else in this strip mall selling ice cream. Maybe in the other strip mall that I own, they may be selling ice cream. But certainly in his business, I would want to ensure that on that tower, that he was providing internet service, there wasn't another transmitter receiver on the exact same frequency sitting right next to his internet to disrupt his service. If there was one on another tower, two or three miles away, I, I, I don't think we as a city could prevent that. But on that tower as a landlord, I think that's a pretty reasonable guarantee. That's how I understand it, and I don't think he's asking for a frequency guarantee on every tower. And, and we may need to look at it from that perspective.
Okay. I don't really want to get into, I'll call it, we back and forth on this issue. My only comment is, I think that if the city wants to lease the towers, you already have to pay for a new water system. You certainly can do it. All I have suggested to this city, and suggesting tonight, and a suggestion to my rural water clients here, is that if you lease your towers, which is something you're doing for two or three hundred dollars a month, rather than somebody spending two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars to build the towers, that it be, A, voluntarily competitive, and B, if you don't connect it to service, you just have it. At least. And then lastly, lastly, we not get the lessor, landlord, in the business of protecting you over Mr. Maronis, if somebody has a frequency dispute with the FCC and their frequencies. I just don't want the city to be in the middle of a frequency dispute. I understand your ice cream, you can sell a melon at that one place, you can sell strawberry there. But this is not why we need the people we're getting ourselves involved as arbitrary on the lease. That's my only comment. I'm just trying to keep it simple. And if you don't, don't agree with me, that's fine.
Do you think that we will be approaching that threat?
No, the problem is, is when you come along with yours, and somebody's there, what we're warning is, is that we won't let a competitor come on in the same frequency. I just don't want to be in the warranty business.
But what I'm saying is that if, if Ziplink was the right before, or tabled before-
They, they didn't even get it. I just know, they made reruns of us, and every time we sent it back to them, the same kind of comments we sent to this gentleman, which is, we don't want to be in the business of trying to regulate when a unit's frequency, or whether it's a dead oven, it's a frequency. In other words, well, once you have the tower, do what you want. Okay? Well, once you have it, run it again.
Not fair, no, not fair.
I'm just trying to keep the city out of the business of regulating that. That's all. And I think if we discuss it, we can bring this back. I'm not having to talk to this gentleman, or to the gentleman in our division. I apologize if you cover for the best.
In addition, I know the term seems wrong for this, it's covered by renewal.
But the renewals are your option.
The renewals are a leader party's option, to cancel within a hundred eighty days. So if, if the city decided not to renew, all they would have to do is inform us that they were not going to renew again. And that's, the thirty years will be dealt. It would be a renewal term, so whether the renewal term is two years or five years, when that renewal term comes up, if the party decides not to renew, all they have, all they have to do is notify the other parties. So, thirty years seems like a long time, but it's, it's done in renewal terms.
When in lieu of going in circles here?
Pardon?
In lieu of going in circles, because we have a lot to cover, we might have a little at the table. Go forward.
Mr. Mayor, I move to, um, table the topic.
I have a motion to table. Item three, D. Second by, uh, motion by Councilman Castillo, second by Councilman Gadeo, all in favor? All opposed. The motion carries. All one in the room. If you can get the staff, and we can get you back on, on a date where we have all the info together, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Mullen?
Yes, Mayor, before we continue, and this gentleman taking pictures, can we reverse the flags? They're, they're backwards.
Thank you.
American colors always goes to the right. He's taking pictures in the office.
My camera takes back the picture.
And then making sergeant in arms, make sure you hear Ernie the next time, and tell him. Now we're going to go on to item three, E, which is considered an action to review appointments to the Parks Foundation, Councilman Bennett.
Madam Mayor, uh, items three, E, three, three, H came about as a result of the last city council meeting, when it was discovered that we had members of boards that were caused, that were taking no action, uh, that we had members of boards that were absent, causing lax of quorums. And I made the comment at the city council meeting, that in order for this, these committees to be functioning, we must have members on these boards that are willing to participate with the function of the board, willing to attend meetings, and ensure that that board is functioning. Whether we as individuals agree with them, policy-wise or not, we've appointed them as a council to those committees, and, and we need to allow them to function. So with your permission, Madam Mayor, I'm going to address, uh, the four committees there, and the information that I have, um, to date. The Parks Foundation, under the guidance of Doug Jones, is very active, is not having any challenges. I'm unaware of any board problems with the Parks Foundation. The Florisville Economic Corporation, and the four, four B Corporation. As far as appointments are concerned, this is probably one of the hardest working boards in the city that has taken on a, a, a huge number of challenges, and created a number of committees, and is moving forward, and as we hear in their presentation later today, making some significant changes there. The planning and zoning committee, as I am told and informed, were, at their last meeting, spent a good thirty minutes discussing the roles and responsibilities of the members of that commission, and that the issue of no action by the board would no longer be a problem by then. When it comes to the four A Corporation, this is a smaller board, the charter only requires five members, and a member of that board has consistently not attended meetings. A member of that board has consistently not communicated absences to those meetings. And as a result, at their last meeting, when two hardworking members of that board, one was unable to attend, one could only attend it by Skype, they were forced to a no quorum meeting. Uh, it would be my recommendation that this council consider the replacement of that individual on the four A board with somebody who is willing to take on the mission of the four A, and has the time and ability to attend meetings. Madam Mayor, I think you had a recommendation for somebody on that?
I think John is going to lead, because I can do it.
Okay.
I, uh-
This being replaced.
Mark Hoffman.
Okay, I would like to appoint Leanne Rose to the four A Corporation.
And- Can you amend your motion in the position currently held by Mark Hoffman?
In the, in the position that held by Mr. Mark Hoffman.
Okay, there's a motion, my Councilman Gadeo, to appoint Leanne Rose to replace Mark Hoffman on the four A board.
That's fair.
And a second by Councilman Neller, all in favor?
I don't mind.
Motion carries. All opposed, none. Motion carries. Five in the room.
Madam Mayor, does that disclose that E, F, G, and H, is that one?
Yes, sir.
No action on the others, is that one?
No. Okay. Would that include the audit committee, and then the-
Well, the audit committee, I don't think we need to take action on, uh, till we get into the, to the budget process again. These were functioning boards, currently functioning boards.
Okay.
No action on the audit?
No action on that. Madam Mayor, before you continue?
No breaks.
Five minutes, Madam Mayor.
This could be a long night, Mr. Mullen. I'll concede to that, if you get to move, um, the executive session first, if other, so then everybody can have a break.
I'm not willing to concede that, Madam Mayor. If we want to be evaluating the city manager on his performance, the items of his reports on A, B, C, and D are going to be critical, and pieces of information to be able to evaluate the city manager.
Will we go on? Whether or not we move it up? Yes, I move that when you move up the executive session prior to the presentation discussion of possible action on A, B, C, and D. So in a second?
The motion will take out of order?
Yes. But that's going to fail for a lack of evidence.
Okay, and we're going to continue? We'll do maybe one or two, and then-
Do we want to take both to the executive session, or just, uh?
Okay, item four, A, city manager's report on council directive to develop a comprehensive tenure master plan? I'd like to have Laura explain to me what a comprehensive tenure master plan is. That was a real direction, I see.
It would make a great lawyer, lawyer.
I know. And then our itself is a plan that is mentioned, which is something that has been done by qualified professionals. We started, it's actually been talked about several times in several meetings. And it's also in your charter, mention the comprehensive plan, and we'll discuss when you create one, how you create one, the nature of the mention in your charter about new life again, during annexations and that.
Mayor, I've got a couple of requests for you to entertain, and for the audience to be aware of. On the city manager's reports, A, B, C, and D. Starting from D is the city manager's report on the new solvency plan. Item C is city manager's report on council directive number five. Item B is city manager's report on council directive to develop the street maintenance plan. And of course, the one that you mentioned is the street, city manager's report on council directive to develop a comprehensive tenure master plan. It is a request of the city manager, if we can, uh, to make the presentation flow better, that we can start with the city manager's report on council directive number five, because that is inclusive of, pretty much, there were other items, with the exception of the street maintenance plan. So for the audience's benefit, we will start with the council directive number five. I gave the council a packet containing this information, that they can follow if they wish. But the initial, uh, council directive came several months ago, when the city manager was evaluated for pulling the executive session to speak with the council on what they wanted the council, the, the city manager to focus on. So today, May 23rd, 2013, City of Florisville, City Council Directive number five. Purpose of the management directive was proactive compliance with financial reporting per charter and contract terms. Implementation, the city's controller and city manager shall immediately begin working to establish a uniform format for reporting, and shall prevent, present such to the city council for consideration and approval for modification at the city council meeting, following the adoption of this city council directive. Reports were given at the following city council meetings, December 13th, 2012, January 10th, 2013, January 29th, 2013, February 28th, 2013, March 28th, 2013, April 25th, 2013, and of course, tonight, May 23rd, 2013. Object number one, method, reporting with full monthly data component and cumulative balances. Reports were given at the following city council meetings, December 13th, 2012, January 10th, 2013, January 29th, 2013, February 28th, 2013, March 28th, 2013, April 25th, 2013, and of course, tonight, May 23rd, 2013. Attached, and, and for the council's, uh, view in front of them are the city council agendas, specifically, I'm having a hard time seeing this. Attached is the documentation supporting these actions, Florisville City Council Agenda, special meeting Tuesday, December 13th, 2012, at 7:00 PM, City Hall, uh, council chambers. And highlighted, it's hard to see, like I said, is city manager's report, D, financial update, revenue and expenditure report, October 2012, FY 2012, 2013. And go on to the next agenda, Florisville City Council Agenda, regular meeting Thursday, January 10th, 2013, at 7:00 PM. Number two presentations, E, financial update, October 2012, detailed listing. The next agenda attached, Florisville City Council Agenda, special meeting Tuesday, January 29th, 2013, under presentation, A, revenue and expense report, November 2012. Next agenda over, Florisville City Council Agenda, regular meeting Thursday, February 28th, 2013, under presentation, number two, B, financial update, December 2012, a detailed listing, slash financial explanation, and C, audit committee update. Next agenda, Florisville City Council Agenda, regular meeting Thursday, March 28th, 2013, highlighted under presentations, A, financial update, January 2013, detailed listing, fund balances, three, new business, CNA, to approve ordinance amending 2012, 2013 budget, and B, CNA to approve purchasing co-op resolution, and we'll get into more detail as, as we go on, why those two were highlighted. Next agenda attached, Florisville City Council, regular meeting Thursday, May 23rd, 2013, under presentation, A, financial update, March 2013, detailed listing and fund balances, B, January through March 2013, quarterly investment report. We're going to objective number two, 1.03, revenue enhancement via management expenditure- We're going to objective number two, 1.03, Revenue Enhancement via Management, Expenditure Reductions, Revenue Enhancement with Cost of Service Requirements to be Recommended by Management to City Council for formal approval by Agenda Item at Council Meeting. On the bullet points under that, it's the City of Florisville Insolvency Turnaround Plan was created. Next bullet point, this plan was put together in conjunction with the Audit Committee and city staff. Next bullet point, this plan was adopted at a meeting of the Florisville City Council on March 14th, 2013. Next bullet point, managers meeting with all department heads held on March 21st, 2013, and April 23rd, 2013, for planning of current and future projects and processes. We will have another meeting next week with the department heads. I pulled them in, we have a good conference room in the back. Every executive under the city manager, director under the city manager, has received a copy of the insolvency plan. They've reviewed it, and at these monthly meetings, we go over what have you done to meet these objectives. And everybody comes in, police department, that this is what we're doing, this is where we're cutting costs, this is how we're trying to generate more revenue, and so on and so forth. Raoul Gonzalez presented to Florisville City Council a rate study at the February 28th, 2013 meeting with suggestions of rate changes for the City of Florisville. Next bullet point, an ordinance that included these suggested rate changes was presented at a meeting of the Florisville City Council on April 25th, 2013. So we move over, we've got a copy of the insolvency's plan, I hope, if you haven't received one and you would like one, just get with our city secretary, we can get you a copy of our insolvency turnaround plan for the City of Florisville dated March 12th, 2013. If we can scroll through that, it's got everything that Audit Committee brought to the city council and approved. Is there any way for you to turn that? Yes, because that's gonna be important. The metrics, targets, and dates, flow chart was composed and brought and approved as part of the plan. This is where we get into how it covers our street maintenance plan, how it covers our capital improvement plan, how it covers financial reporting and whatnot. So I'd like for her to turn that around and we can go through that. We've got 2012, 2013, all the way through 2018 and 2019. Zero-based budget, all departments, by 2014, by the end of that year, which is something that our auditor presented. Thirty-six-month working budget through 2014, 2015, and at the end of that year, we should have that in place. Monthly and quarterly financial records started immediately, and you'll see that ring line go all the way across from its inception till the end of time, that's what will happen at our council meetings. Financial management policies, comprehensive policies and procedures by 2014. General fund deficit reduction, thirty percent every year, starting by the end of this year on our general fund deficit. Development of a ninety-day fund of reserve, which is something that the auditor brought forth by 2016, 2017. Debt service, restructuring of our GeoRe Fund and Bond Series 2010, which is our event center by 2016. Reduce Florisville Event Center operating cost by 2016. Utility permit and fees, this is a critical point that we've made already. Implement Phase One Water and Sewer Rate Plan by the end of 2012, 2013 budget, which has already been approved. We talked about it. Existing permits and fees schedule update by the end of this fiscal year, which is something that the Sheriff Pollak and Cindy Nekos are almost complete, that we will bring to the council for review and possibility. New permit fees and schedules by the end of 2013, 2014. Infrastructure, here we get to our complete comprehensive ten-year master plan by 2014, 2015. By the end of that fiscal year is what we were targeting. Updates on the ordinances by 2013, 2014. Complete future land use plan, which is something that our P&amp;D is working very well on, and will be bringing to the council by 2013, 2014. Complete level of service determination, same timeframe, 2013, 2014. Complete ten-year capital improvement plan by 2014, 2015. And thirty-six-month street maintenance plan by the end of this fiscal year, yes, fiscal year 2012, 2013, but we'll complete that also with the assistance of our city secretary and our street department supervisor. Okay, go ahead, sir. Now you're gonna quit. A copy is attached in the binder, the ordinance number 2013-004, which was the water and sewer rate increases, the rate increases, it's one, two, three pages. Fund balances, 1.04, fund balances, February review of fund balances for trend lines, October, November, and December. May review of fund balances for trend lines, January, February, and March, et cetera. Fund balances were given to the Florisville City Council in the following meetings, February 28th, 2013, March 28th, 2013, April 25th, 2015, and tonight, May 23rd, 2013. 1.05, budget adjustments, starting in February, quarterly city council budget adjustments to be made per agenda as necessary, to be recommended to council for action as appropriate via manager or comptroller. Ordinance number 2013-003. An ordinance providing for amendment number one to the operating budget of the City of Florisville, Texas, for fiscal year 2012, 2013. Bullet point under that is approved by Florisville City Council on March 28th, 2013. Next bullet point, ordinance 2013-005. An ordinance providing for amendment number two to the operating budget of the City of Florisville, Texas, for fiscal year 2012, 2013, presented at May 23rd, 2013 meeting, and it was taped. So that was the one that we ran before. Next, behind that are ordinance numbers 2013-003 for the first budget amendment, and ordinance number 2013-005 for the budget amendment, that was taped. Next, 1.06, scheduled for monthly council meetings, second monthly meeting of each month to address financial operating and council review of reports, the B meeting. We had stated that every second meeting of the month was gonna be solely for financial purposes, but of course, we've got so much going on in our city because we've got progressive city council that we add that in addition, so. Financial reporting was done at the second regularly scheduled city council meetings on the following dates, February 23rd, 2013, February 28th, 2013, March 28th, 2013, April 25th, 2013, and tonight, May 23rd, 2013. Council Directive Number Five, the last portion of that is 1.07, Managers' Court, Personal Review. In order to be given an adequate period of time is with to implement the procedures contained in this council directive, the city manager's next quarterly personal review shall be had at a second regular city council meeting in May 2013, following the financial reports reviewed. At such time a review of that presentation and effects of this directive shall be included as part of the evaluation, which is tonight, May 23rd, 2013. Posted agenda, behind that is just a copy of tonight's agenda with the highlighted portion, where it states adjourned in the executive session pursuant to the section 551.074, the Texas Government Co-Personal Matters, to deliberate the appointment, interim employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties discipline, or dismissal of public officer or employee city manager. I, as Councilman Miller did earlier, owe tremendous thanks to our comptroller, Laura Fagans. She has come in and has brought a aura of professionalism that has been lacking in that office for some time. Good people, good, good, good people have been in that office, but not capable like her. So we have made strides forward, and like I was telling the council, the Audit Committee earlier, she's got a little dry erase board in her office now, where she's checking things off. She has done many, many things that needed to be done for the city. What is the next portion of that? I want to talk about the insolvency plan. I briefly discussed the insolvency plan in this presentation of Directive Number Five, saying that we, as city staff, are doing this on a monthly basis with the executive team. They in turn go and meet with their staff under their direction and reiterate, this is what we're doing, this is what we're trying to do, this is what we're headed. You wouldn't believe the buy-in that we've got from our individuals. They come up with cost-cutting measures every day, and they work hard every day, and they haven't lost a bit of enthusiasm, as the mayor brought forth to some of them. We're getting more compliments and we're getting complaints, so that's a positive. And we're moving forward. We're not doing it on our own, the staff is not doing it on our own. The boards that are sitting in the audience are doing a great service to the community. That was that one, or which one is that? Yes, let's do a street maintenance plan, real quick. The council wanted a street maintenance plan for thirty-six months, done by the end of this fiscal year. Several months ago, we were able to complete that with the assistance of Rudy Vazquez, our street supervisor. And we're gonna go through some of this real quick. I've got copies, if anybody wants that, street maintenance plan for 2012, 2013 was already presented to the council. And we went forward along real quick. Let me see the, we talked about? Trail Street, Ruffel Street, and Bee Street being streets that were held first priority. Want to move over to the next cycle, the whole next cycle. We've already done 2012, 2013. 2013, 2014, get to the streets. The next roads listed on the M&amp;S Master Plan were Goliath, South Third, and K Street. What we did is we stayed with the 380,000 sales tax that we know we are gonna meet our projection. We are monthly looking out with Laura to see if the trend continues to increase, to see how much sales tax we will have allocated to the street maintenance tax, thanks to the citizens that reapproved that courtesan sales tax for a. Paying basics, we talked about estimated cost of streets, estimated cost of equipment for our, with it. What we did notice in the short time from the first one to the second one that we did is that the materials cost did increase slightly. South Third, we've got the length, the width, the total square feet, with it. Cost of material, again, with it. Goliath Street, length, width, square footage, with it. Cost of material, with that. K Street from Third Street, length, width, and square feet, with that. Cost of material, M&amp;S estimated cost, South Third, Goliath Street, and K Street, keep going. And then the options, again, that we had discussed. And of course, at this time, we're holding, retaining as much street maintenance tax for future use every time. Keep going. Funding options, keep going, keep going, all within, next one. And our final one, 2014, 2015, street maintenance plan, with it. This is C Street, C Street, and Oak Lawn and Oak Lane, with it. Again, we stayed with the same amount of sales tax that we're collecting now, with it. Basic payee, cost of employees, equipment, keep going. Material, and then we're gonna do the same thing, C Street, with it, keep going. C Street, and you said C Street, one side of C Street, the other side of 181. Oak Lawn Street, material, Oak Lane Street, material. And that's it, on that one. Those are the thirty-six months of street maintenance plan costs that we've got, and that is available for anybody to be, or get a copy of it. Now let's move to the areas where we're having an issue and trying to figure out, what is this called? And we had a discussion, Councilman Miller and I, this is what this is, and he reiterated to me what he was looking for, so this is what we're working on, on this portion. We've always stated that we know that we need professionals to actually conduct the work, but we, as city staff, can do as much as possible. Andy Bagentas in the audience, Andy Bagentas, of course, was brought into City Hall, and he is working with our engineers to cut costs on engineering to complete some of the stuff that we got. There's a way to make that a little better. Some of the stuff that we've talked about, that we're working on, is our land use plan, very important, something that we haven't had in a long time. And the P&amp;G is working with Cindy Nekos, who are staff member. For the land use plan, we projected for 2013, 2014, about $15,000. We were able to work with the P&amp;G. They located a firm that is currently conducting that for us, and that is Stewart Planning Consulting LLC. I've got a copy of the agreement with him, and like we talked about, it is the cost of that service. It's about $15,000, but I want to give you the actual figures that we're working on at this time of time with that individual. Task one, land, future land use plan, 12,750. Task two, zoning ordinance assistance, 1,680. And task three, annexation plan, $600. That's one of the issues that he's working on. What we plugged into, into this template that we're working, that we're calling Master Plan, or how's it listed on the agenda? Ten-year comprehensive plan, are things that we know for sure need to be done, and how we're gonna spread that out, and how we're gonna fund that. And thanks to the council, and thanks to their aggressiveness, we know that the water and sewer rate study was implemented, and those fees will be specifically for these projects allocated once we do the budget amendment to the. What Andy Bagentas was brought into, to the City Hall, and Andy, could you stand for me? Andy Bagentas was, is a wastewater operator for wastewater treatment plant with a lot of knowledge, and his prior job is a very technical person, so we brought him, and he's working with Larry Heimrich. I brought to, to the council at the last council meeting, what Larry's work order would cost for a specific area of town, to see what kind of cost up would be associated for us to do an analysis of our infrastructure. We need maps of our wastewater and our water lines within the city. We've got them, but they're old, and they're hand drawn, some of them. Any additions were penciled in. What they're gonna do is digitize those, have a working document, and the digital format in the office that Andrew will be adding to, cutting costs on engineering services, so. Larry's work order was that the 48,580, and Larry Heimrich, I keep quoting him by name, he is with Bure and Partners, our engineering, has been the city engineer for many, many years. Council said that is not sufficient, we need to know the whole picture. We want a cost on what it's gonna take. Once we know the big picture, then we'll see, we need to break it down, how we can work with Larry, what's gonna be priorities. So recently, Andrew and Larry worked on that for council. We received two additional work orders that encompass Larry correctly, but I'm wrong, the mapping, water and sewer models?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the calibration of the models, and we're testing to make sure they're accurate.
Okay. Professional Services Work Order, Wastewater Collection System Mapping and Study for the entire city, 97,160. Professional Services Work Order, City of Florisville Water Distribution System Mapping and Study, entire city. and Study, Entire City, 98,750. So those are the two work orders, and I will get copies for the council, because of course, that has to come back for your approval and your guidance on what direction that we're looking for. On this template up here, we took, we worked when we first started as a council manager with this current group, just to market and start a planning. Councilman Miller wrote out some stuff, I wrote out some stuff, other council members started writing stuff, staff started writing stuff, so. Monique Cordova went ahead and put this into this format, so we can at least have some idea of what we're looking at, and it contains land use plan, it contains water distribution and collection system. One of the things that we got to prior to this council, a change in our council was we were working with USDA, the process is still there, but what we're lacking is a engineering study, or you call it, Larry?
Pardon me?
For the wastewater treatment plant, the portion that you're, that we're waiting for, for?
U S D R.
U S D R?
Yes, yes, there's a, as far as the grant application requires, a formulary review report, and an environment report that has to be done to get the process going, and then after that is submitted, then you'll find out if you can get the grant.
That's running about $89,000 of a book that we've got, but of course, the council said, we, before we get to that point ahead, we've got to back it up, we've got to find out the mapping, we've got to find the water and the sewer lines, and then we'll decide if we are going to pursue the USDA to expand the current treatment plant, or if we need to build, et cetera. Street maintenance tax is stated on there, parks and cemeteries, and the public safety. And that is available, did you put this in the package? Okay, but we didn't get copies. And that pretty much covers, and I hope that I did bore everybody, city manager's report on council directive number five, street maintenance plan, 10-year master plan, and these-